We were gonna do them for ourselves.
Oh, I haven't.
Oh, for the, for the convention.
There's all these people.
Yeah.
They're arguing with me on it.
I don't hear. I wouldn't even enter.
No, when it comes up, and you get the presentation? I think Ferguson might even go for it.
Twenty-one, uh, twenty-one.
Hundred and twenty. Well, I know. You have to stand by twelve. My head right now is eleven by the beach. Very size workers. We need to recall that they'll spend another couple of hours. What kind of motors are underneath the pumps? I mean, there's all that kind of stuff that goes into them. Eleven by twelve. I mean, eleven by twelve, which is one hundred fifty feet.
That's where we need to be.
No, we need to be at one fifty.
Well, we need to cover those. Those are the most popular ones I have covered.
It is seven o'clock. We have a formal call city council meeting in order. First item on the agenda tonight is invocation given by Deputy Mayor Pearl Tim Vaughn. And then the pledge both American Texas flags. I will lead that as you join me.
Please stand and join me in a moment of silence. And especially remember all that happened in Connecticut in the tragedy of last week. And offer up your prayers for them as well as for our soldiers who defend us and make all of this possible. And any other cause that you see fit to pray for. Please, a moment of silence. Thank you very much.
Will please join me in our pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Part of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One nation under God, one and indivisible.
We do have a very special presentation tonight. And I would ask Dr. Joe Walker if you would come forward to make that presentation, please.
Thank you for having me. I am here to present a, an award that is handed out to an individual within the park and recreation industry who has been recognized at the national level for past and future contributions we expect to see them make. In order to receive this award, you have to be nominated by a member, series of members, as well as be recognized for past service and show the potential for future impacts to be made to the industry. Your individual who's receiving this award has done this at all three levels, being it service at the community, service to the industry, as well as service to the field in resources and science. And so it is my pleasure and privilege to get to present this award to Hillary Bowen as a rising future professional for the National Recreation and Park Agency.
Hillary, please come down.
Thank you.
Well, Hillary, we want to thank you for all the dedication and many hours of work that you've given to this community, to the city, and to your job. And to the citizens, not only in the city of Louisville, but in the surrounding communities that you've helped. I've looked at your tenure here and all the jobs that you've done and performed and the way you've touched so many people's lives. We certainly want to thank you for that. We encourage everyone to be sure when you do see her, give her extra thank you and a pat on the back because she's done this for a long time. If I'm not mistaken, you started out as a part-time lifeguard, is that correct? That's right. And worked your way through. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you. Just another one of our wonderful team members that we have here working in our cities. Also, it's awesome to be able to recognize them for the efforts and the hours that they give to our community. Adam D. is a public hearing consideration of an ordinance for a zone change request from Old Town Mix Use Two to a single-family residential owned point one-one acres located south of Perry Street on the east side of South Hatcher Avenue, further identified as H.R. Howard Edition Lot One, as requested by Habitat for Humanity on behalf of the property owner. Habitat for Humanity has the property under contract. We'd like to construct a home of approximately one thousand four hundred and fifty square feet in keeping with the single-family residential zoning district requirements. Habitat for Humanity was granted variances by the Zoning Board of Adjustments on November seventh, two thousand and twelve, to reduce the front and side yard setbacks as well as to the lot size requirement, subject to the zoning being granted by the council. The Plains Zoning Commission unanimously voted to approve the requested zone change at their meeting in November twentieth, two thousand and twelve. Recommendation to council is, is to approve the ordinance set forth in the caption above. Did have a card here, did not wish to speak, was in support is Ed Reeve of Capel. And then also do have a card here for gentleman that did want to speak in support of this item is Roger Anderson. Mr. Anderson, do you want to come down, sir? If you would just state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening, council members. My name's Roger Anderson. I'm Construction Services Manager for Habitat for Humanity of Denton County. I'd like to particularly thank your staff member, Mary Perone, who has worked with us through this effort to bring this to council. And of course, the previous three meetings, a lot of work that she put into that. So I'd like to thank Mary Perone, in particular, Nika Reinike for her support, too. Habitat's anxious to build here in Louisville. And we have four congregations that will be providing the volunteers for this build on South Hatcher. We're hoping to get started next month. And they have been chomping at the bit to do this. They raised the funds for the sponsorship last July. Had completed the fundraising by last July. And they've been chomping at the bit ever since. So I'm looking forward to doing this if the vote is favorable here tonight. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you also for you and your, your staff and volunteers that have been working with the city to find an appropriate place and to come up with a good standard living in a house that not only the, the city can be proud of, but those who do inhabit the facility would be proud of for many years to come. And we thank you for that, sir. With that, entertain the motion to close public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Have a, motion by Councilman Ferguson, close public hearing. A second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Councilman Ferguson?
Move to approve this as written.
Second. Have a motion to approve as, as presented by Councilman Ferguson, a first and a second by Councilman Durham.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas, that amends the zoning ordinance of the City of Louisville, Texas, granting zoning changes on the point one-one acre tract of land fully and completely described in the attached Exhibit A, ordering a change in the use of said property from Old Town Mix Use Two District zoning to single-family residential R five district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability determining that the public interest and general welfare demand a zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is visitor's citizens forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. I do have several cards here. I'd just like to remind, and they're all on the same topic. So I would like to just remind you that you do have five minutes to speak for each speaker, please. First one I have here is Jonathan Hightower. If you would, sir, just give your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Certainly. My name is Jonathan Hightower. I live here in Louisville at fourteen eighty-five Juniper Lane. I'm here with a group of people who agree that Louisville's city ordinances should be changed to allow people to keep hens on a normal-sized suburban lot. Under the current ordinances, you can have six cats, six rabbits, six dogs, and no hens. Hens don't get rabies. Hens don't bite people. They don't dig under the fence and chase the neighbor's dog. They don't howl with the sirens, and they don't bark all night. There's no significant public interest reason to prevent people from having hens. Not asking for roosters, just hens. Even Flower Mound allows them. This is an ordinance that's really an area where the city is restricting our freedom to do what we want with our property with no good reason to do so. Some of the other people here tonight will give you their views on the topic, why hens are beneficial and should be allowed. We've also got Jeff Raska here. He's with the Texas A&amp;M Agricultural Extension Office. He is a poultry specialist and can answer any questions or concerns you guys may have. He did an educational seminar in Flower Mound last week, and we hope to bring him back to Louisville to do a seminar once the ordinances are changed here as well. I've also got a document here setting forth some basic information about the topic, benefits of hens and homegrown eggs, some education about common injections, and suggesting the wording for ordinance modifications. Got ten copies. Who do I need to give them to?
Yes, give me a hand, man.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
I agree with Thomas Jefferson. He basically said it best, that government which governs best, which governs least. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Anthony Hightower. If you would just give your name and address.
Anthony Hightower, sixteen thirty-three Clarendon in Louisville.
Thank you, sir.
I just have one thing to say regarding my personal experience. When I first bought a house, it was here in Louisville in nineteen seventy-four. There was a neighbor across the alley, one house down from me. He had a six-foot wooden fence around his backyard. And inside the backyard, I could see the top of what looked to be an oddly proportioned storage building. I didn't think much of it. It was more than three months, four or five months, something like that, that I lived there before I became aware that he was raising chickens. There just had not been enough noise, odor, or anything else to attract my attention to much less bother me, for me to realize what he was doing there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Emma Lindy?
Um, my name is Emma Lindy, and I live on fifteen eighteen Springer Lane.
Thank you.
I believe that backyard chickens are a good idea because for us kids, it would be a good idea. It would be very, it would teach us responsibility and to take care of animals. It would help the environment and would be a healthy way to get food. It would be a good pastime if we were bored. It's something to do that would keep us away from technology.
So you don't, you don't want a cell phone? You don't want a cell phone?
I do have one, but you get away from it.
I thought you didn't want that. I'm sorry. I'm just teasing you, hon. I'm just, you deserve one. Thank you very much. Ronald Fagins?
I'm Ronald Fagins. I live six thirty-three Pickett. I've lived in Louisville for fifty years. As, growing up in Louisville, we, we had neighbors that had had chickens. They were around, different people had had them. Matter of fact, I got in trouble because as a small child, I roped a few. Found out when you rope a chicken, it doesn't do well. There's a lot of benefits to having chickens. You, you look at the, you know, Louisville is a, a city that recycles. You can use the, the chickens for recycling. You can use the hens for recycling. You can use the hens for organic. We have some people that do some organic farming, or they have a little, little garden in their yard. Matter of fact, that's another thing, growing up, my family's always had gardens. But this would give, uh, this would give you a, a place to, to put some of your garden. The, the chickens can keep the pests downs without having to go with pesticides. If you eat the eggs, you're not going to be putting out fertilizer. So you're, you're treating your yard a little better. There's a lot of reasons to allow the, but one of the things about it is we're the fighting farmers. It's hard when you allow Flower Mound and Denton and some of these other cities to allow hens. And you're telling the people here in Louisville, even though you're a farmer, you're not allowed to have the hens. Thank y'all.
Thanks, sir. Jeff Raska?
Mr. Mayor, council. I am Jeff Raska. I'm from Texas A&amp;M. I'm an extension educator here in Dallas County. And I developed the urban chicken program for Dallas County. I'm also a four-H program assistant here in Dallas County. So I work with kids, and we teach poultry. We have a big poultry program here in Dallas County. I want, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer some questions with some facts about this, and we want to kill myths on it. But the, the program that Mr. Hightower's put forward, the ordinance change that he's put, put, put forward for you is very fair. Ten-foot easement instead of one hundred and fifty. The, the basic, your ordinance one twenty-five is basically a hundred and fifty-foot easement between property line and, and the actual chicken coop. We just can't work on a city lot, on a, on a five-thousand-foot city lot. So that's, that's basically the ordinance, would be the ordinance change, a ten-foot easement, which is what Flower Mound adopted. And I just, we just did Flower Mound. I just talked to Allen City Council about the same type, same type ordinance, same type, same type situation. So there, there's a lot of myths out there. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, you know, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't sell chickens. So I don't, I don't sell this program. I don't sell it one way or the other. I just want, I just want to be here to support them. They came to me. They, they put forth a good program that I can support, that we can support at A&amp;M for what we teach and what we're doing. And I just, I just will back them here. I also offer the city education. Often, we do seminars. We'll do seminars for city, for the libraries. I, I help the, actually, for Dallas, I've helped the Humane Society. That they've, you know, there's chickens everywhere. You got chickens all over Louisville. You do. We know we do. You hear, you'll go down the neighborhood, you'll hear rooster. You hear him there. We don't want roosters in here. And, and matter of fact, I am from Irving, and Irving has no ordinance whatsoever. And actually, I'm working with, we're going to work for the City of Irving to put an ordinance in to, to eliminate roosters from inner city. We don't want roosters in this city. And, and we don't want a lot of, we don't want fighting roosters either. We're working on that, too. So there's lots of things I work at. I, I, I believe in government regulations where it's needed in certain aspects, in certain areas. But also, I also, we need government, we need the freedom to let them have the hens. Hens are wonderful. Again, grain cycle, grain city. It's a wonderful part of the grain cycle. It's the top of the nitrogen chain. It is a compost nitrogen igniter. Fresh eggs better for you. It goes without saying. Disease, there's no, they don't carry West Nile. Avian flu didn't come from chickens. There's lots of, there's lots of myths and things out there. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to field questions. And I do back the program, I do back the ordinance change. So we do, I'm here to help you all. So any questions or anything?
Do I have any questions?
I do, Mayor. I'd like to ask Mr. Raska, is it?
Yes, sir.
My familiarity with chickens are kind of limited to my grandmother and where they used to end up. But short of that, is it myth or true that chickens draw snakes?
Chickens do not draw snakes. Matter of fact, on YouTube, if you go on YouTube, look under ban them chicken eating, eating a snake. That's my chicken eating that snake. They loved to eat.
Chickens eat snakes, not snakes.
Now, snakes, some bigger, like rat snakes, some of the bigger snakes in our area will eat chicken eggs. They will not be able to eat the chickens. You know, you've got chickens in, in, in different countries, you know, boas would eat chickens. They do feed boas chickens in that life if they're in there.
What we deal with here, would it be fair to say that they draw snakes?
They do not draw snakes, no, sir. They do not. They will not draw snakes. They're not, they don't naturally, they're not a, snakes are naturally, would naturally want a warm blood. They normally feed on warm blood. They do feed them live, live insects and such. Most of our snakes do. There are some exceptions, that snakes that eat eggs out of being, just being starved to death. But let me tell you, the, a, a full-grown chicken, a full-grown, even a full-grown hen, hen protecting the egg, a hen in the, the dominant hen in that clutch, they're very aggressive. You know, they're, they're, if you believe in evolution, they are the, they are the evolutionary equivalent to the, to the T-Rex, T-Rex. They're very, very, very gracious hunters, very keen eyesight, very, 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 very capable of defending themselves. And snakes just don't usually, don't usually go into the pens or don't usually, they're not attracted to chickens, just like rodents aren't attracted to chickens. Rodents are attracted to the filth. That's why this program that we'll set forward, that I teach, that we teach there at the extension, is cleanliness. Cleanliness keeps them healthy. Cleanliness keeps predators away. Cleanliness keeps flies away, which they don't particularly track flies. It's like everything else, just like your dog. If you don't pick up your dog waste, it's going to do the same thing. It's just that when a dog goes, he goes a lot more than a chicken goes. So there's a lot of difference in sizes, what you're getting rid of. But you can't use the dog waste for compost. We can use the chicken waste for compost. So they don't, they don't attract predators. That's a myth. That's a, that's a, that's a myth on, that's definitely one that, that we want to talk about or rule out. But, but part of our program, again, we'll talk about that.
Thank you, Mr. Raska.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you for the question.
Do you have one else?
I, I, I just want to clarify, clarification. Who did you say you worked for?
I work for Texas A&amp;M, the Extension Office here in Texas A&amp;M University, AgroLife Extension. We're, we're extension educators. I, I teach preschool all the way up to adult classes. Our education program from A&amp;M, we're just, we're just here in the county. So all, all counties have, all counties have a extension office. And it's through A&amp;M as our university.
All right. Thank you.
I had one other question.
Yes.
With the, the opening statement, we talked about hens, and then the document handed out specifically said chickens. You've talked about chickens. Are we only talking about chickens? We're not talking about guineas or other egg-laying fowl?
We're talking about chickens. Guineas are, guineas are a wild peasant fowl. They're little, we don't want, guineas are not a good backyard animal.
Okay.
There are selective breeding, over decades and decades, selective breeding of chickens has produced a very productive, very docile, human-friendly hens. Twenty, thirty breeds are really good. Egg-laying, friendly, child-friendly. They're very, very social animals, so they adopt you as part of their family. They do sit, and when I'm at home, they'll sit on me. When I'm outside, they get, you know, they climb on you, they get in your food, they're looking at what you're doing. They're trying to see what you're doing. That's selective breeding. They don't typically sit on the eggs, so they're not aggressive, they're not broody. They're bred to just lay the egg and walk off, and that's what they typically do. So we've got selective breeding, years and years of selective breeding have given us that. Very good breeds. But we're talking about just chickens. We're not talking about ducks. We're not talking about poultry on the whole. No turkeys. There's a whole different story. And we're not, we're not pushing that one. That's, that issue, there's no way in the backyard. And we're talking about, I don't know what your average backyards are here. I'm sorry, I didn't get the, I missed the chance to study it. But I'm talking about average backyard. Six hens, eight hens, captive. And when you're gone, they're in a cage, they're not running free. We don't run them free in the yard. We don't freelance them. But when you're there, you let them out in the yard with you, they'll go, they'll walk around the yard. You're supervising them. And you're making sure, because we got to be a good neighbor. This, this, this program we're putting forward that we, that we have at the extension is to be a good neighbor. It's, it's advocate for the animal first, to be a good neighbor second. Because you got to be a good neighbor with this. This is not a typical pet, I know. But, 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 and you might have a neighbor that was raised on a farm. And if your neighbor, sometimes some of these neighbors that were farmers, they don't have the same idea as a pet chicken. It was just a nuisance animal that they got eggs from, and when it got old enough, they ate it. And that's their thought of it. They're not thinking about it in the same terms. We're talking about an egg producer, but also a pet animal, also a teaching animal. The kids, great, great responsibility for the kids. We show them at State Fair, we show them at the Stock Show, and we can get them in four-H programs. There's a lot of things we can do for the kids with them. Great teaching tool. But they're just, just a very, very good animal.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. I do want to clarify, Mayor, they will bite.
Well, they will, yeah. Well, they can peck you.
I was just kidding. They don't bite hard, but they.
No, they're pecking. They got, they got beaks, I mean, yeah.
Mayor, can I ask him another question? We need to move on. We're kind of discussing an item that's not on the agenda, and we don't need to be discussing.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Uh, we do have cards also filled out here by people that did not want to speak, but did want to state that they were in support. Elaine Hightower of sixteen thirty-three Clarendon. Amanda Hightower of fourteen eighty-five Juniper. Heather Carusi of twenty thirty-nine Mallard Drive. All these are Louisville. Stephanie Fagins of six thirty-three Pickett. Steve Southwell of nine ninety-five Downey Drive. Seth Southwell of nine ninety-five Downey Drive. And Jennifer Lindy of fifteen eighteen Springer Lane. And Laura Butler of fifteen eighteen Glenmore. All those people were in support but did not wish to speak. Thank you very much for coming in. We'll have someone from staff get in touch with you, sir, and visit with you about that. Okay, next item on the agenda is, is a consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Did not have anyone fill out any cards to remove an item, however, staff has, that wasn't on the consent, was it? So no items have been recommended to be removed. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve, that we close the consent agenda.
No, to approve?
To approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilman Vaughn to approve the consent agenda as presented. A second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve is consideration of a variance to the Louisville City Code, Section six dash one zero three, regarding stacking requirements related to the Air Gas USA located eight ninety-six South Mill Street as requested by Kyle Ho, the developers' engineer on behalf of the owner. The subject site is a one-point-four-two-acre lot zone, general business within the Ferguson addition. Air Gas USA currently owns the developed property and is in the process of dividing the lot into two lots. Staff has reviewed and approved the engineering site plan for Air Gas USA, subject to the city council approval of the variance, excuse me, to waive the stacking requirement for two existing driveways on South Mill Street. Recommendation is that council approve the variance set forth in the above cash, caption. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, if there's no questions about this or further discussion, a move to approve.
Second. We had a motion by Councilman Durham to approve as presented, a second by Councilman Graner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen is consideration, excuse me. Consideration of a variance to Louisville City Code, Section six dash one zero three, regarding control of access requirements related to the Ace Paintless Dent Repair located at seven forty Valley Ridge Circle as requested by Kyle Ho, developers' engineer on behalf of the owner. The subject site is a one-point-five-three-six-acre lot zone, light industrial, with the Zubel addition, Ace Paintless Dent Repair currently owns the developed property and is in the process of dividing the lot into two lots. Staff has reviewed and approved the engineering site plan. Recommendation of council is, recommendation to council is approve the variance set forth in above caption. Councilman Graner?
Mayor, move to approve item thirteen, the variance as.
Mayor, move to approve item 13, the variance as presented.
I have a motion by Councilman Grinna to approve as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 14 is, staff has asked us to table this item to next meeting, so if I could have a motion...
Move to table item 14, Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to table item 14 to the next...
We need a date certain, Mayor.
Next meeting is...
January 7.
January 7.
Move to table until January 7.
Second.
I have a motion to table item to the next meeting, which is January 7, by Councilman Gilmore, seconded by Councilman Vaughn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 15 is consideration of three variances to the Lewisville City Code, Section 6-165, minimum dimensions, off-street parking, Section 6-124, landscape of dedicated streets, medians, and other public right-ofways, and Section 11-12, permissible signs located within the Old Town Center District that require a permit for the engineering site plan of the Old Town Plaza, as requested by the City of Lewisville property owner. The Old Town Plaza project has been underdesigned for the past two years. Many aspects of the plaza were developed based on citizen input and a desire to create an urban park in Old Town. Due to certain existing conditions of small size of the property, three variances are requested to fulfill the design of the plaza as proposed, to allow smaller parallel parking spaces of eight foot by 21 foot in lieu of GDO requirement of 10 foot by 24 foot and 16 foot to 20 foot, maneuvering room behind the parking spaces in the alley in lieu of the required 24 foot, and two, to allow trees to be within 10 foot from the back of curb, and three, to exempt the plaza from the sign ordinance. Recommendation is that council approve the variance set forth in the above. Councilman? Councilman Gilmore, excuse me.
Mayor, I will go ahead and move to approve this item.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Gilmore to approve as presented, as seconded by Councilman Grinna. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
Whoops. I'm sorry.
I am opposed, Mayor.
I understand. Motion carries four to one. Excuse me, Councilman Vaughn. Reports. Nika. Bob? Chief? Saw Santa the other night. He was out there prowling the neighborhoods. All those little boys and girls are being much better now, I bet. Melinda? Chief Turbo?
Hello, sir.
Excuse me, Carol?
Maybe one of these days I'll have a good report when we get some rain.
Oh, we got, my yard actually got a half inch the other day. I couldn't believe that.
A little bit, but it didn't make any difference.
Yeah, didn't make any difference in the lake. But still got fish in it here. Here, there's still fish out there biting. Donna?
Mayor and Council, we have a lot of fun activities going on at the MCL Grand for the holidays. Two art exhibits. One is Toyland, which is an exhibit of photos, drawings, sculpture, and paintings with the theme of childhood. And those sculptures and paintings are then later donated to the pediatric wing at the Medical Center of Lewisville. Another exhibit is one called Just One Note, and it's drawings and paintings for handmade guitars and song lyrics on the theme of music, and that's also by the Visual Art League. And then several performances are ongoing. Christmas Spectacular, which is the Three Redneck Tenors, and if you haven't seen that, that is just a phenomenal performance.
Would you say it's spektacular?
Spektacular. I wasn't quite for sure how to say that, the redneck way. So I didn't. But anyway, it will be Thursday through Saturday, Thursday, December 20th through Saturday, December 22nd, oh, and Sunday, December 23rd, excuse me. And those performances are at 7:30 PM. There is a matinee on Saturday, the 22nd, at 2:30. Another performance is the Pump Boys and Dynettes. It's a musical review performed by Our Productions Theater. It's in the Black Box, Thursday, December 20th at 7:30 PM, Friday, December 21st, and Saturday, December 22nd at 8:00 PM. And then finally, we have our ongoing Friday Acoustics Jam put on by, or organized by the Visual Arts League, and that is at Friday nights at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, ma'am. Grinna?
Hey.
Mr. Ferrer, I'm sorry. Mr. Back. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, just want to remind everybody to stay safe during the holidays, take the advice of the police department, be careful when you're out. And if you're shopping and in your vehicle, make sure everything is put away and locked up. So we need to do that. And watch the cooking and things at Christmas. If you're trying something out new, and don't create a fire hazard. So that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Grinna?
You know, last meeting, I had asked, if you look on your monitors, there are some pictures from our toy drive we had this last Saturday. At the 4th Regiment, I'm in the 4th Regiment of the Texas State Guard, and I just want to thank the citizens of Lewisville to, for donating the toys that they did. They were fantastic. The smiles of the patients and the families that were there. A lot of these families are spending everything they have to try to save their lives of their little ones. And there's a lot of specialty cases going on in this hospital, and it's just amazing, the good work that these doctors and nurses do, and what these families are going through is just heartbreaking. But with smiles and with the joy of the season, they really enjoyed it. And I thank all of you for donating what you did next year. It's just getting better. The picture you see right there is a special note is a young lady by the name of Autumn Swank. This is from her Facebook page. She was, and when she was 11, she found out she had cancer. She's got a brain tumor. It's all on her Facebook page. It's very public. I'm not doing anything that's not out there. But, you know, on her own, 11 years old, she collected over 1,300 teddy bears for Snowball Express, which was for the organization for the children who have lost a parent in the war since 9/11. She's phenomenal, girl.
Good job, man. Councilman Gilmore?
Just a quick public service announcement. The city does recycle Christmas trees, and we're doing that at the Lewisville Lake Park at the soccer complex there. You can find that information in citelouisville.com, and that's through January 18th. So for those of you who maybe are traveling and want to dispose of that tree a little early, it's starting now and goes through January 18th.
Mr. Keen?
Mayor and Council, two informational items related to I-35. You may have heard already that the Texas Transportation Commission has tentatively awarded a project on I-35 called Work Project Four to a consortium of respondents. I don't have the exact name of that consortium, but that is a tentative award, and they will be negotiating final documents over the course of the next month with that group to initiate construction on I-35 sometime in 2013, assuming everything turns out all right. Secondly, they have scheduled a public meeting for property owners affected by the right-of-way acquisitions on I-35 for January 10th. It will be over in the MCL Grand Auditorium, and I believe it's at 6:00 PM. We'll be putting that notice or information on our website, so people can see it as well. Tech dot will be notifying all those property owners themselves directly.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Ferrer?
Yes, sir. I ask Assistant City Manager Barron to do the announcements for the art center, so I'd have time for a couple of things I wanted to say. First of all, this evening marks a year sitting here on the diocese, City Councilman, and while some of you are probably thinking, gosh, it seems a lot longer than that, hopefully for the staff's part, it's because I have been hanging around here for so long anyway. For the rest of the councilmen, thank you for your patience. It's really been a pleasure, in all honesty. I enjoy the job. I enjoy the work. I enjoy doing the research and being prepared, and I enjoy the issues. So I want to thank everybody, staff, city manager's office, and my fellow councilmen, the mayor, for the opportunity to serve and to make it such a pleasurable experience, and hope to be here for at least a couple more years. Secondly, it's been a tough week for a lot of people. And I guess, you know, looking not only at the world, but our own country, a very difficult time. I was recently reminded of a poem that Henry Wadsworth Longfellow wrote, and I'd like to read you four stanzas from that poem. I'll keep it brief by just reading four. "I heard the bells on Christmas Day. Their old familiar carols play, and wild and sweet the words repeat, of peace on earth, goodwill to men. Till ringing, singing on its way, the whirl revolved from night to day. A voice, a chime, a chant sublime, of peace on earth, goodwill to men. But in despair I bowed my head. 'There is no peace on earth,' I said, 'for hate is strong, and mocks the song of peace on earth, goodwill toward men.' Then pealed the bells more loud and deep. God is not dead, nor doth he sleep. The wrong shall fail, the right prevail, with peace on earth, goodwill to men." This is a time of the year when a number of different religions celebrate various parts of the season. And I would say this, you'll find a common thread among them that we call the golden rule. If we would all take time to give just one gift this season, and then give it all year long, and that gift is respect for each other, this would truly be peace on earth and goodwill towards men. Thank you.
Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I would just like to commend the police department for the increased presence that they have seen fit to produce at our local schools in view of what happened in Connecticut. They have increased their presence, hopefully making our citizenry feel safer and more secure. And my hat goes off out to them in appreciation for what they have done. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counselor? Julie? Officer, once again, we thank you very much for your service. Appreciate you being here tonight. First thing I want to do is I want to publicly apologize to Northview Baptist Church for not recognizing their participation at the Christmas Stroll Festival that we had a couple weeks ago. They did an excellent job. They've been doing it for the last eight years. And just due to oversight, I apologize the oversight of not mentioning them. We were up on the balcony thanking everyone for their participation, but we certainly do want to thank them, because they have been tremendous asset, going around caroling for us every year. We certainly do want to thank them for all they do, and hope they will continue to do that. Another thing is, I want to brag on a couple of things. First, our high school, LHS, Lewisville High School, there are several years, as y'all know, there's angel trees everywhere, it seems like. And I think we all know what an angel tree is about. And several years ago, there was one at the mall that CCA did, and several of the students and faculty there at LHS decided that they would take on that particular thing of angel tree for LISD students. So the people, the students and the faculty there at LHS have taken that project on for several years now, and they open it up to all students throughout LISD. They contact all the counselors and get information from students who are in need, who may not have as Happy a New Year. And they did a wonderful job this year. And I also comment that I'm very proud of our Rotary Club in Lewisville that also contributed, and they raised almost $3,000 to give to the angel tree funds, so that those children might have a great, happy year. So when you see those people at LHS, and you're Rotarians, please thank them, because they did a wonderful job in making sure that these kids will have a good, happy, Merry Christmas. And with that, I do want to thank everyone for all that you've given me this past year. It's been a wonderful year. We've accomplished a lot here in 2012, here in the City of Lewisville. We've got a lot to be proud of in this community. We've grown. We've got new assets in our community. We've got higher employment now than we've had in years. We've got a higher population. And I think we have a better quality of life, and I think everyone would tend to agree with that. I certainly want to thank our citizens for being such model citizens to the North Texas area. And I want to thank our team members that work with us here at our city. Appreciate all the work that you do throughout the year for us, making sure that our citizens have a wonderful place, not only to live, but a place to work. With that, I want to thank all of you and wish you a very, very Merry Christmas. In accordance to Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551, consultation with attorney, legal issues related to Camelot landfill, Section 551.072, property acquisition, and Section 551.074, appointment of city health officer, and Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, will now convene into closed session. We'll convene back into regular session. Is there any action to be taken, Council?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dr. Stuart Kaufman as the city's health officer to continue that role.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Grinna, and a second by Councilman, excuse me, Gilmore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn?
Have a motion adjourned by Councilman Ferguson?
Second.
Second by Councilman Vaughn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.